Mr. Mayor, Council, the public in attendance and the public online. I appreciate you allowing us to have this meeting tonight. I know we wish for more ideal circumstances, but unfortunately, we had already scheduled this meeting, so the online opportunity is based upon the emergency powers. And I'll be trying to share my screen momentarily. And the format for this is, this is the second meeting in three scheduled public hearings. Today is Thursday, September 26th, 2024, 6:00 PM. As stated earlier, we had advertised and we had conducted administrative hearing Thursday, September 26th at 10:00 AM here in these chambers. Good to see some of you all who were able to come back out this evening. I hope that you'll find that if my comments are not as consistent as they were this morning, the PowerPoint will be. It has not changed at all from what you saw this morning. So we'll kind of go ahead and get started. And the way that this public hearing will work is, I am speaking on behalf of staff. It was a staff recommendation. Our finance director and leadership team had approached the mayor and council and looked at some preliminary 2025 budget numbers and said that we would recommend advertising for a 1.5 mil increase. And the idea is, what is a milage rate? And just to kind of put it out there, the tax rate that is used to calculate local property taxes. So there's the county, school, and city property tax. We'll only be discussing the city portion this evening. So property taxes are used by local governments to help fund services within a community. So the majority of communities in the state of Georgia has a milage rate. It does vary in terms of what that milage rate is, but for the most part, it is about $1 per 1,000 assessed. So some of the services provided by the city of Jasper with respect to our general fund services. And this morning, I believe, I kind of touched on, just from an operational perspective, you have general fund services. So you have the milage rate, which is a component of the general fund, which provides police, fire, code compliance, planned zoning, inspections, public work, includes streets, stormwater parks. Administrative services, these are some internal components that help support some of the operational. So for instance, city management, finance, human resources, our elect students, municipal court and animal control. The enterprise fund is another funding that the city of Jasper has with respect to water sewer. That is not part of the general fund. So for this evening, discussing milage rate, we're focusing in on the actual services provided through the general fund. So oftentimes, the profession that I'm in, we try to communicate to our elected officials, to our constituents, to our, just in general, people who are curious about how does government operate. With respect to the general fund expenditures of 7.6 million, there's about 7.6 million worth of money that needs to be coming into the city in order to operate. Now, the milage rate, the mil that we collect from the property, that's residential and commercial, for this year is right at 1.7 million of real property. So obviously, you can see that it is a very vital component of our revenue, but that in and of itself does not fund the entire services, as you saw in the previous slide. And oftentimes, it's easier to communicate that the public safety, the police and fire, are two departments that most jurisdictions are familiar with. You see, you know, it provided a public service, you see them out and about the community. Most people are very excited when they see either one, police or fire, depending on, you know, how it's going. But that amounts to 4.4 million, almost 4.5 million for this fiscal year 2024. So oftentimes, I try to put that within context, because when you're looking at the need for adjusting the milage rate, clearly, the milage rate in and of itself cannot fully fund or fully sustain local government. So I've been a part of other jurisdictions, and it's typically in that 20% to 30%, if you're looking at a percentage of what that particular revenue is, which means you have between 80, 75, 70% of other revenue streams, occupational taxes, business license, franchise fees. We have a lost here in Pickens County, that's another tax that we're able to receive from consumption ability.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir.
There's an audio issue with the online attendance. Are you able to either speak louder or move closer to the microphone?
Certainly.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Would you slide that TV slightly that way, so it's easier for you to see? If it will go, nope, anyway. Oh, there we have it. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to reiterate again, this evening is the second of three advertised public hearings. We had an administrative public hearing this morning at 10:00 AM. This is the second of the required three. If a municipality or governing jurisdiction does not roll back the milage rate, they are required to conduct three public hearings, and therefore, since we were not recommending to roll back, we are doing three public hearings. The third public hearing will be on October the 7th, which is a Monday at 5:30 in these chambers. And then there is the consideration thereafter for the elected body to then determine if they want to adopt a milage rate at the established 1.5 advertised rate, or if they want to adopt a milage that is less than the 1.5 milage rate.
Mr. Douglas. A gentleman in the back, welcome to the meeting. If you'll come on in, please don't walk in door for others. Thank you. There are available seats, the folks will slide in. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
And I'll defer to Lindsay for a moment in terms of what I said this morning, and it still holds true today. When you're in the line of work of dealing with, you know, the public, you want the public to attend when you do have public meetings. That way, when the public is here, the public can be heard if they so choose. Sometimes, if you're having public meetings or public hearings, at least at the staff level, we oftentimes, you know, want to make sure, well, did the notice get sent out? Did people see the notice? Was it through the paper? Was it through social media? So as with this morning, it is encouraging to at least have the public attend, so then that way, we know at the staff level that at least there was notification to you all. And Lindsay, if you don't mind, just kind of briefly touch on the way that this is advertised, the percentage.
Thank you, Brandon. I'm Lindsay Williams, finance director.
You may need to speak closer or step over here closer to the microphone, please, ma'am.
Sorry. So as you see, we advertised a 31.9% increase for the property taxes. That's based off, what is the rollback milage rate? And we calculate that, and we actually submit that to our tax commissioner's office, and they submit it to the state when the mayor and council actually approve it. So our rollback milage rate would have been 5.127. So with us proposing a 6.721 milage, the 1.5 is based off the percentage from the 5.1 versus our last year's milage of 5.221. So that's why it looks like there's more of an increase, because it's based off the rollback. We're not recommending a rollback this year, so we have to go by that percentage.
And so for some of you online, you may be able to view this a little better. For those who are physically in attendance, we're going to be handing out a piece of paper for you to have. Hopefully, we'll have enough. And we will actually email this to No Pickens as well, so they can upload that spreadsheet along with the PowerPoint presentation. So what I wanted to do is, while you're getting the handout, just to kind of walk through what some of the handout verbiage means, is you have the appraised value, that you can see is circled in red, that's the reading from left to right, is the left column. That's what you would consider, what the value of your property if you were to sell it. So once again, the appraised value is something that the city does not go and appraise. The county tax assessor, board of assessors appraise properties in the county, the city being in the county. These properties are appraised at that level. I'll go back and just discuss. In the purple box, the next to it is the assessed value. So the actual tax rate at which you're assessed is 40% of your appraised value. So you can see in that other column, it is 40% of the market rate, and that is how the third column is then delineated of the 2024 milage rate calculated at 5.221. That would yield the amount of taxes that's for the city. Once again, we're not talking about the county or the school. This particular one is just much of the same, except incorporates what the proposed 6.721 mil would yield with respect to the actual assessed value. And so the difference is the last column. So the first 15 rows is essentially a sample size of our community. We tried to do a cross-section. We do have quite a few neighborhoods, some have been around a while, some have been around a few years. So we want to get a capture, a cross-section. And so the yellow highlights essentially an average that, based upon this sample size, is 283,000 of appraised and 113,524 assessed. So based upon the last year's 2024 milage rate with regards to the proposed, if it were to go to the 6.721, it would yield an average of $170 a year difference. You can see that that's based upon the valuation of the property. So Mr. Mayor, Council, public, it is city's management's recommendation on a proposed milage rate increase to address inflationary costs associated with insurance, cost of supplies. There's no proposed increase in city personnel associated with this milage rate increase. So I said all that this morning, and I quickly realized that that doesn't really mean a whole lot. I think the overwhelming questions that at least was asked during this morning's public hearing is, why are you proposing it? Inflation's going down. And part of the comment that I made, not to be anything more than candid, is we have not witnessed our suppliers decreasing their costs. I should have addressed it as terms of our personnel costs have not decreased. Some of you may know that there had been a need to adjust salaries during the last couple of years in pretty much all sectors, private and public, in order to capture the talent necessary, in order to have those high-functioning departments that you all as residents want to see. You want to see professionalism. You want to see the talent that you expect and deserve. So going back to what the cost is being utilized for, I explained briefly, and mayor and council, you may recall that in July of this year, we amended the 2024 budget. So the way that the budget process works is sometime around the beginning of fall, staff gets together and says, what are some needs with respect to supplying personnel, what they need, whether it's costs, insurance, et cetera. So there's also the associated estimation of what's revenue that's going to come in. We've realized that when the budget is set in December of 2023, and you're formulating it months in advance, there's an estimation of some of these revenue would come in. July, when you look at actual budget numbers and recognize that those revenue streams are not coming in, because there are external variables associated with it, whether it's private development, whether it's fees associated with said private development, things that we don't necessarily have control over, you have to make adjustments to the budget. So we recognize that we were not in a position of recommending to do any sort of reduction in force, since we do not have a very large, robust hundreds of employees. So the only thing that we could do is utilize some of the fund balance to help mitigate any of the shortfalls for 2024. So when we began looking at the 2025 budget, recognizing that we were already starting with some of those revenues not particularly being robust this year and not projecting them for next year, the only variable associated with revenue that we would have any control over is the milage rate. And when I articulated that this morning, it was, well, what is it being used for? And the best way that I could really say it without getting into accounting, because from a management perspective, I try to keep things simple for me, so that's why you see the disclaimer at the end of the spreadsheet, it's pretty damn accurate, but ultimately, there's other variables with calculating taxes with exemptions. So for illustrative purposes, I wanted to give that to y'all. So for budget, we have property casualty insurance to cover our equipment, our assets. That went up a couple of hundred thousand dollars with respect to health insurance. That also went up in excess of 100,000. So any yielded amount from a mil and a half would nearly take half of that. And then you look at it in terms of other supplies and materials and gas, that's where it eats up again. So part of this is just to take what staff heard this morning, and just to kind of reiterate that there is no one, we're taking extra money and increasing personnel. We're taking extra money and doing merit raises. We're taking extra money and purchasing new vehicles. There is none of that being proposed in the 2025 budget. It is merely to help balance the budget without having to use additional fund balance. Now, part of the process is for council to hear these public hearings, to hear this as you're hearing it, and then on the 7th, they will then render a decision as to how they want to adopt the budget. What that will then enable us to do at the staff level is operate based upon what that milage rate would be, what it would yield us with respect to a line item, and then we can go from there and balance the budget. In terms of my managing philosophy and the direction from the elected, we are not in a position of looking at reduction in forces. Therefore, the only alternative, since other revenue streams that we cannot control may not become a realization, we would have to use fund balance in the immediate to balance the budget. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Council, the public, that does conclude my presentation on the public hearing. It was about one minute beyond what I did this morning. So with that, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, I can entertain the public, or if you would like to call that door, sir.
Absolutely. So number one, thank you all for being here. Those that are in attendance virtually, I appreciate your attendance as well. We want to make sure to give everyone an opportunity to speak. Everyone's going to be given a three-minute time slot to speak. What I'd like to do first is go through those that are in person and give you the opportunity, and then at that time, I'll turn it over to the assistant city manager, Ms. Kim Goldner, who is operating the computer. She can navigate the computer. If you would like to speak, if you can visually show her that you're raising your hand online at the appropriate time, we'll then navigate through the virtual attendees, and you'll also be timed on three minutes. Mr. Douglas does have a timer, and so once that timer goes off, your time is up. As it is a public hearing, obviously, I know that's a little odd, public hearings are not a debate, as was mentioned this morning. So public hearing is for this elected body to listen to you, to hear your concerns, and then at the very end, Mr. Douglas or staff can certainly answer those questions if they see fit, if they have the answers for you, and if something they don't have the answer for, they can certainly follow up with you and get back to you. Mr. Douglas, I will let you go ahead and continue with the public hearing, sir, starting with those that are in attendance with a three-minute time period.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the way we did this morning is, if you'd like to come up and speak, you're more than welcome to. If you'd like to just raise your hand and stay where you're seated, state your name or address, and just project your voice out so that all of us can hear. And anyone who wants to speak? Yes, sir?
Tony Davis, 400 Georgia Avenue Street, 134 Bell Avenue. So we're discussing a 31.9% increase in property tax, correct? Should we not be able to look at spending first? Where's the money going? How do we get an itemized idea of where the money's being spent? And should we not look at spending cuts as well as tax increases and meet in the middle instead of coming up and saying, okay, whereabouts raise your taxes 32% annually on each property you own? And you don't really have to understand where this money's going once we have it. But you talked about a proposed budget that you're based on things that may happen or may not happen. So you raised the taxes, and then the things that you're saying may not happen do happen, and money comes in that you were not expecting, we're not reimbursed as property owners in the city, and we really don't understand where the money's being spent. Like itemized, you've said several places it might go, increases in pay, the police department, the fire department. What does that look like itemized, and how do we find that out? I want to know where you're spending the money before you start taking more. Where can I find that?
I'll get to everyone, and then we'll kind of wrap it up with some things. Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Brittany Johnson. I'm at 298 Logan's Run. I have one clarifying question, which is, does this affect residents within the city limits of Jasper or Pickens County as a whole? That's one question. My second question is, what cost reduction measures have been taken specifically with insurance? And there was one other item that you mentioned that went up significantly. Insurance, well, it was insurance, health insurance and the property insurance. I would like to know that. I think that there are a lot of cost reduction measures that can be taken out. Next, there are two components that we talked about today that affect property tax. One is the assessed value, and one is the milage rate. I'm pretty sure within the past few months, or maybe even a year, we all had assessments increased. I hope I'm not mistaken by saying that. And I would like to know why, at that point in time, we didn't look at these numbers and say, hey, we're really off-base here, and we need to look at something. A 31% increase at one time is a lot, especially for a city that doesn't necessarily offer as much as other big cities do, right? That's a lot. My last comment is, have you thought about the way this is going to affect renters within the city of Jasper? I am a homeowner, I am not affected, but we have renters that struggle to find affordable housing. Your property owners are not going to absorb this increase, they're going to pass it right along, and you're going to have a huge part of this population that simply can't afford rent. And I think that needs to be considered in all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Christopher, I live in Pickens County. So my first question for you guys, what have you guys done to mitigate waste of spending, right? And I'm sure to answer his questions, we know of record requests where you guys spend money everywhere, correct? Whether that's through the fire, whether that's through public safety, whatever it is, right? What are you going to mitigate risk, or not risk, but mitigate the waste of spending? Because clearly, there's plenty of it everywhere, right? We talk about parks. Parks are a joke, right? We have, you get snake bitten at one park, other park, you're going to get a technical shot. So it's not in good, not even good order for people to go to those places. And we're talking about keep raising the rates. When does the bleeding stop? Or is this kind of a toy of, we're going to say 30%, and then the people will be happy when you get, okay, we'll go to 15. Either way, it's still a national increase that I think, if we can mitigate, as you said, find out where we can cut the fat and stop spending so much money on things that just aren't going to work. Because again, what happens when the people decide, you know what, we're going to boycott buying anything from city of Jasper. We won't go downtown, we won't spend a dime downtown. Downtown area turns into a drug fest most nights, and we've created that to continue on. So where are we, when is it going to stop? When is the bleeding stop at some point? That was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
70 slide, 175 East Sellers Street. I have regularly attended city council meetings here in Jasper as well as L.J., and I know that annually, they do have the listing of the budget at a meeting annually, and it is always based upon the milage rate, as you've succinctly explained, but it's never been so well explained what the milage rate is and why it's based upon that. So I appreciate this type of meeting, and I actually request such a similar type of meeting on an annual basis, so that the community is aware, not only of the line items of the budget when it's presented, but why you get to that based upon it. So thank you very much.
I guess, my name's Penny Dykes, I'm at 279 Grand Circle, and I would like to know if Jasper is going to grow and how we are addressing that growth. If this just brings us to par, where is our long-term plan, or where can we access it, or how we are going to bring in businesses that will help offset some of the taxes for the residents? And I also have been to some city council meetings, and it would seem to me, in that planning, we need housing for the people who can work when we do have growth, like cashiers at the Publix, or bank tellers, or just the workers. And yet, we had presented at one of the meetings I came to, three proposals for affordable housing, and the council turned them down. So, you know, if we have growth, why are we not looking ahead as to how we're going to house these people, how we're going to address a long-term plan? Not just them, but there's other things other than that, but that's one thing I know that you guys did turn down.
Thank you.
Yes, sir? My name is Dr. Johnson, 298 Logan's Run. You mentioned $100,000 healthcare increase. My question is, how many employees are covered by this insurance that's going to warrant such an increase? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa West, 28 Fox Run Lane. And I just think this is really bad timing, because you just increased our water, and then now we're getting taxes too. Our taxes are going up because our property values have went up. So it's not just the milage rate, it's, they're already going up. This thing gets really bad timing, you know, taxes, the water, our groceries, everything's going up. For people to get behind this, you are going to have to provide the accounting. You're going to have to give us the numbers and let us see it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Bryant.
Hi, I'm Susan Bryant. I'm at 235 Keable Creek Drive. My husband and I are both retired. We were just hit with a huge property tax assessment recently. And of course, the water situation has certainly affected our limited income. And I also read a post today. I don't know how valid this post is. I would hope that we get some clarification on it. But the post is telling, is stating that the council members here are collectively, the collective amount paid is $2,851.11, which is probably just a little bit more than what my husband and I are paying. And I'm wondering how much of a stake the council members have in terms of taxes. I want to know if this is true. And I want to know how invested our council is in Jasper.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Gail Ray, and I live at 669 Cobra Road. And I was just wondering, like, years ago, there wasn't a lot of building going on. But in the last couple of years, we've got a lot of new houses, a lot of new apartment houses. And with all that extra tax coming in, why should all of ours go up alike ones? Because that should come in with a lottery revenue.
Yes?
Yes, sir? I'm Dave Terry at Park Road in Jasper. I think one of the takeaways that's been confusing the people is that multi-generational people that have been here for a long time, people that have come into the city, don't always agree on things. And there's the perception that there might be a lot of, you know, growth happening and a lot of change happening when it seems like the report is saying that we're having to tax existing property owners more to offset the lack of growth that has actually been taking place. And I'm president, I'm also president of the Pickens County Small Business Development Council. That's a nonprofit that supports locally owned businesses. And what those small business owners are saying is they don't have enough, we don't have enough housing for people who work service jobs in the county. They're starting to go elsewhere, and we really need to change the perception. And when opportunities present themselves for affordable housing, we need to look really hard at that. And small businesses, especially in the downtown district, are challenged right now. They're suffering. There's not enough density. There's not enough people. So I encourage the council, continue to think creatively and innovatively when opportunities for things like new jobs and housing come in. The fact that we desperately need economic development to bring employers here. There's an aging population. That's the reality in Pickens County. And we're losing a young generation to other places, and we've got to stop that trend. And I think a lot of people appreciate the fact that the current mayor and council inherited infrastructure and water issues. But we also have to clear the path for those behind us. I mean, the infrastructure, we have to be able to deal with. But people are looking for long-term solutions, not just identifying what the problems are. We want to know, you know, what the vision is to solve this long-term. So again, hopefully, this is a great starting point. The transparency that you're showing is really appreciated. But people want to know what's next. Where do we, where do we go from here? So thank you.
Yes, sir?
How unfortunate to be here this morning. So I've had the whole afternoon to think about what we talked about. And I've come at it a completely different perspective. First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for giving us a safe city. Thank you for giving us a fire department and police department. They're responsive. And that means an awful lot, especially if you've come from somewhere else and found Jasper to be your new home. It's a big deal to know that you got our back. So we've got to say thank you first. Secondly, everybody knows it costs more to live today than it did 10 years ago. And as a result, there got to be ways about increasing income and the stream that not only city, but businesses operate under. I have a business on Church Street. And as a result, all the people that are around me, I talk to. And I hear all kinds of scuttlebutt and conversation, things that are true and probably false. And those that scare me are the ones where I hear great big numbers thrown out about the loss that the city council, that the city of Jasper has had as a result of some mistakes people have made. And it's unfortunate. It happens with everybody. You make a mistake in business, somebody's got to pay for it. And I understand that. So I'm, in thinking about this and looking forward, has anybody even considered an increase in the local sales tax? So that we capture everybody who comes through Jasper on their way to a mountain or something? If we can get a 1% consumption tax in the city of Jasper, then all of a sudden, we create an awful lot of money. It doesn't come out of taxpayers, homeowners and businesses and people that are struggling. Because I can tell you, as this lady over here was talking about rent, I know that with this tax increase, I'm going to have to go on items that go through my business. I have to, to be able to cover it because of fixed costs. So I just ask that you think about these things as profit streams. I don't want you seeing the police department running out down the road, setting up, you know, radar things to raise income that way. That doesn't make any sense because it deters people from coming. But if you do something where you approach the legislature or whoever, you know, rich in Jasperzi or whatever, and start thinking about ways that we can get income into the city without doing it through taxes. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Wayne McGale of 37 Pinnacle Way. Please exempt groceries from that new tax. But other than that great idea, let's, I don't know, alcohol tax is, you're part of, yeah, great, good idea. Just exempt Hershey's.
Advice tax.
Yes, ma'am?
Today, I lost my three minutes earlier. I don't know if I got to.
Let's say you got a minute and a half.
Okay, I can ask it. Brittany Johnson, 298 Logan's Run. My question for the council is, we have a lot of new development, a lot of houses under construction. Have the income that those would bring in the coming year or years been considered in your figures? Or are you just considering properties that are already occupied or sold?
Thank you.
Next, say.
Yes?
Hi, my name is Ari Davis, and I'm from Fort Scott Tribe. Speaking of transparency, I was just wondering if as citizens in this community, if we can have a meeting of those ideas that we can first make money for the city so we don't tax everybody else with, you know, since the water, we just had an increase on that and also the assessment. So I think, I think calling a meeting for everybody in Jasper to like say, hey, let's, let's think about ways of how we can have income for the city first. And then also wanted to ask if we can have like a budget meeting that everybody could be put attend and see where, how it was in 2023, 2022, and 2024? And how we like itemize, like a lot of people are talking about itemizing everything and kind of seeing how can we be part of that and really be transparent so we know where our money's going to.
Thank you.
Just last 10 seconds I have.
You actually have 22.
All right, 22. Dave Terry, the Pickens, I went to the state of the community report. Pickens County housing permits declined 6% last year. So there's a perception, again, that there's this crazy growth happening when in reality, there's not enough growth happening. When people see construction, it's anecdotal. It has to be within the context of what other counties are doing. And it has to be in the context of what's going to be sustainable to not have more tax increases.
Thank you. Anyones, I do want to make sure that we reserve some time for our online participants. And I know it may seem a little awkward me just standing here and looking at you, but part of it is to give everyone an opportunity to speak and ask. Because a lot of times you may have the same type of question or saying. And in summarization, two or three points may help to at least clarify. So if we are good, we may, yes, ma'am?
I just asked one. Melissa Barclay, Highway 50 Green West. I was going to see if there's any kind of pre-planning or forethought put into how much growth we can sustain without having to build more infrastructure, such as schools or work our road department, that we would need to be taxed extra so that we could put a cap on our growth so that these things wouldn't happen in the future.
Yes? Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I think Ms. Goldner? So at this time, ladies and gentlemen, what I will do is I will turn the floor over to control to Ms. Kim Goldner, who is controlling the virtual attendees for this public hearing. If you would like to speak, if you will either electronically raise the hand through the fast forward, you can turn your camera on and raise your hand so she can see you. She will call you by name, and then you will have three minutes to speak. So if you are a virtual attendee, if you will signal that you would like to speak by raising your hand. And just for clarity, Dr. Proctor, you are online. Can you give me a thumbs up that you can hear me? That didn't help. Dr. Proctor, can you hear me, sir? Okay, thank you. Once again, if you are an online attendee, excuse me, if you are an online attendee and would like to speak, if you will either use the icon to raise your hand or simply turn your camera on and raise your hand to the camera so Ms. Goldner can see you. We will certainly give you three minutes at that time.
I have not seen any hands.
All right, last call for any virtual attendee that would like to speak. If you will raise your hand in the chat or turn your camera on and raise your hand, we will acknowledge you.
Brian Rittenberry. Brian, let me find your name on here. Give me just one more. Thank you, Brian. You're ready.
Hey, guys. Brian Rittenberry, I'm in, of course, 19 South Main Street. First of all, I want to say, I feel like you guys do a job that nobody else wants. But I would like to know, in what other ways has the city council, you know, the consumption tax, that actually was a really good idea, alcohol tax? I know a lot of the, a lot of people that, like I say, that we have never done drinks on Main Street. But you know, it's not a very often thing, but you know, it's a good thing. But I'm just curious, like, what the city council has done to try to increase revenues in other ways aside from the building. And I, you know, I've tried to list that here, and hopefully I don't have a step in the high, I can list that. But that's really my biggest question is what, you know, as a business owner downtown, obviously, I don't think, I don't think that not shopping at our downtown businesses, boycotting our downtown businesses is going to be a good answer because that's going to hurt us. And we're just like everyone else. We're trying to survive and make it. And so, you know, I would like to know, just, you know, what are some of the other options that have been, you know, laid out on the table to help increase revenues aside from, you know, 30% increase?
All right, Ms. Goldner, if you will move on to the next individual who would like to speak. If you will raise your hand virtually or in the chat or turn your camera on and raise your hand to the camera, we will acknowledge you by name and then give you three minutes to speak. Do we have any other virtual attendees that would like to speak? Last call for any virtual attendees that would like to speak on the public hearing. If you will raise your hand in the chat.
Sorry, technical difficulties.
Everybody, light back on. Hey, everyone, this folks.
Yeah, but it's revenue connection issues, unfortunately.
Internet issues?
Yes.
Yes, we're like.
I'll start now.
That is not how I want a virtual attendance to end. Unfortunately, the internet has gone down the city hall. That is unfortunate. Mr. Douglas?
Guys, about five seconds, real quick. So I wasn't recommending boycotting downtown business. That's not the thing. My question was, what if the people got to a point where they can't afford to go shop downtown instead of, you know, whatever, spend any money downtown? So I would never encourage that. Again, I hope that Mr. Rittenberry didn't think that's what I was encouraging because that's, that's a terrible decision.
Mr. Douglas, I will turn it over to you to finish your fellow hearing. Is the internet back up? Uh, no, sir.
Yeah.
All right. At that time, I would disconnect the computer, unfortunately, Mr. Siphon and Mr. Proctor. All the virtual attendees are not with us anymore. Mr. Douglas, it's already concerned. Yes, sir, and it's approximately 6:51. So if anyone were to have been on the meeting virtually and wants to kind of finish watching it on Pickens, it is being videotaped, so we're at the 6:51, 6:52 PM mark. So I'll try to answer the questions kind of in, not bureaucratic tones because I know oftentimes there's this perception of this, you know, apathetic, non-caring, non-communal type of individual. But in all candor, part of the 19 years that I've been affiliated with local governments, I will tell you that it is oftentimes a situation where it is a little bit awkward talking to constituents about taxes. And I think a lot of times it doesn't resonate very well because the budgets that we produce, oftentimes people don't try to weed through them. We do have all of our budgets online. What we'll most likely do, just to kind of make it a little easier, is put an icon more on the homepage or somewhere where you can click on it to make sure that, for instance, the 2024 budget that was adopted December of 2023, it's just multi-layers of tabs on a book. So just a simplistic way that I look at it is there's a revenue page. And oftentimes, what we'll probably do for, you know, the next meeting is just kind of isolate that revenue page. That way you can see the different lineups. And what you'll see is you'll see one column in terms of the estimated 2024 projections, estimates. And then you'll see a 2024 amended to what revenues were coming in. I began May of this year, and about two weeks in, last Wednesday, we looked at financials with regards to what was some of the revenue that came in in terms of where were we trending? Are we trending close to 50%? You would want to get close to that mid-year mark in June. This was the latter part of May. And in some revenue line items, we were at 10%, 25%, 30%. Some of it is, once again, outside of our control. It's, it's actually not that cumbersome that once we post the PDF online, you'll be able to look at and you'll be able to see specifically the lineups. Then for each specific department, you'll see line items for salaries, benefits, professional services, equipment rentals, supplies, maintenance. professional services, equipment rentals, supplies, maintenance, things of that nature to kind of see where, uh, the monies are coming from. The, uh, end of the year, we have an auditor, third party come in to look at the numbers. That is published as well to see how we recently did it in June, they came in, uh, so that'll be published where you can kind of look at it as well. Uh, I don't want to pretend to be able to cite, memorize everything. The reason I tell folks in my profession as a city manager, property taxes are a little easier to, to remember is you have a assessed value, which is a 40% of the appraised value, and you do multiplication times the mileage to arrive at the actual amount. So for instance, I think someone's question was about, uh, taxes, and if you look at your spreadsheet, uh, that's handed out, the city in 2024, if, if, uh, if you're on T-Time Trail, uh, your value was 347,513, and this is not, I mean, this is an actual house, I don't know comparatively which one it is, uh, it's assessed at 139 and it yielded $726 in city property tax. So that's based upon, that's one of the newer homes in subdivision. If you go to a different part of the community, uh, I'm not sure the calculation of how the county tax assessor or assessors, how they do it, but presumably there's this formulaic of comparable sales in the area, and so a virtue of that, um, there may be a number of years that, uh, the county doesn't assess that particular area. So we try not to get into that because that's outside of my qualifications, but, uh, I do think that the, the public information out there is, is you do have the ability to look and see that in 2024, the average, uh, mileage rate, tax collection, so that means per property was $593. So that's just the average. So you have some that may be 300, you may have some that's 700, you may have some that's 1,500. But the average is around 593. So I hope that helps to, to clarify in terms of the actual individual property. I'm, I'm seeing a head shaking, no. So we can try to get together afterward and see if we can, I can speak it a little different. With respect to, uh, not to get into other avenues of, of loss, uh, you'll see in the revenue, uh, that we estimate about 1.8 to $2 million in loss. That is something that is outside of our control, that is locked in for 10 years with respect to negotiations between the county and cities, with respect to the state regulates, uh, that there are obligatory service delivery, uh, discussions every 10 years, and then certain things like lost negotiations, the local offshore sales tax, which is the consumption tax, is in schedule to, to, to negotiate. So, okay, this is what, uh, this particular city is going to yield with respect over the next 10 years annually. So our percentage is, I think, in the 20, 25% of the overall, uh, lost collections annually. So that's about $2 million. So unfortunately, we have no control, once again, in the year-to-year to vary that number. We have taken measures in the amended, uh, July, uh, budget amendment to adjust our fee schedule, uh, so that will be posted as well to try to adjust all the other fees, uh, with respect to alcohol license, business license, permit fees, et cetera. You're always trying to find that balance between, you know, trying to diverse some of it, but part of the variableness of that revenue is driven by businesses that may or may not continue to operate, that may select, that they have to, uh, you know, no longer operate. You don't necessarily get that. So I hope that answers a few of the overarching themes questions. And part of it is, uh, I think some that was in attendance this morning, uh, knows that, uh, we do try to engage, um, often and even afterwards. Uh, I know with the weather, uh, we may have some, some things I may need to get with personnel with, uh, emergency personnel, but, um, I think after this, Mr. Mayor, uh, let's see here, I think, that's about it. I know we can, um, you know, the, the main thing is I do want y'all to feel comfortable in taking a look at our website. Uh, we'll take a look at it if it's, if it's something that I can't take a few clicks and look at some PDFs, uh, I would want y'all to, to, to have that ability. So we'll post that, uh, get it updated so you can take a look at the revenue sheets and all the different, uh, sheets of the general fund budget. Because once again, when you, when you talk about cutting, uh, I think you'll, you'll recognize when you're looking that there's not a lot of capital expenditures, uh, meaning tangible goods or equipment. Uh, the city has utilized SPOSS, uh, to purchase fire apparatus, to purchase police vehicles, uh, because there was not room in the general fund budget to budget for those capital expenditures. So SPOSS has been a revenue stream. The, your operating budget is almost a salary and benefits and just your office supplies, and then any sort of capital expenditures that you could cut theoretically is in the, the SPOSS area. So we'll have another one of these on October the 7th at 5:30. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? There are some really good questions to ask.
Sorry, name and address.
Oh, sorry, Tom Shaw, 72 South Main Street. Um, there are some really good questions to ask, that I don't hear the answers to. Can they ask those directly to you now?
In terms of the Q and A? Well, as a public hearing, uh, this would be more of a format that's just hearing the public, uh, and I've tried to answer some of the broader, uh, discussions, uh, but we're, we're always available for email and/or afterwards. Um, I do want to be respectful of the elected's agenda we have, uh, so I did not want it to turn into anything more than a public hearing.
Chief, if I could have you come over real quick?
Bear with us just a moment.
Hey, and Mr. Mayor, Lindsay did, uh, so I know there was a question procedural about, uh, and, and once again, this is without candor, we do try to invite folks, so for instance, in November, uh, don't log this into memory, but maybe November 21st, I think we'll be trying to, to aim for having a public hearing on the budget. So that's when we would look at the 2025 budget. We cannot set that until this mileage rate is adopted. So once the mileage rate is adopted on October 7th, we can spend the next month finalizing the 2025 budget proposal to then present at a public hearing before the elected body and then for a final decision, uh, in December. Uh, so I know that was a procedural thing too.
Mr. Douglas, if you will, um, if the public would like that, that's more than available to them. Chief, I'm going more. For those of you that are in attendance, what I've handed off is, this is a listing, it's like a small little cutout. Uh, it has my email address, it also has all of your council members' email addresses. If you want to have specific questions, you can certainly email them to us, we'll make sure that we work with staff, um, to get those answered for you. And Chief, when to get another stack? I only have a small stack on my desk, there's a room, that's my service.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, I know we've got another, I, I do want to be sensitive to your agenda, if you want me to continue to recognize, uh, or if you want to adjourn the public hearing?
Has anyone here not spoken that would like to? That has not spoken?
There were some folks on here when we had our mishap, um, let me.
All right, in person, is there anyone that has not spoken? That would like to? Um, for the online attendees, I apologize for the internet drop. I am glad that you were back with us. Uh, what I would like to do once again is offer you a three-minute time slot to speak. Um, if you would, in the chat, uh, let us know that you'd like to speak by raising your hand virtually and/or using the camera and raising your hand on the camera. Ms. Kim Goldner will recognize you, call on you, and you'll have a three-minute time slot. Is there anyone virtually in attendance that would like to speak that has not spoken yet? Again, I apologize for the internet drop.
I do not see.
Last call for any virtual attending?
Okay, hang on, give me just a moment.
Did you have someone? Okay.
David, you should be good to go. You're, if you'd like to start.
Can you hear me?
Uh, not particularly.
Is that better now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I couldn't be there tonight in person, I'll be there on October 7th to go over some, uh, more specifics of my thoughts. But I heard a lot of talk about residences, residential, and I did hear a few business people talk about local businesses struggle. And one thing I want to point out through the Capitol, as an investor, now with a tremendous amount of property in the city, I don't pay the taxes, my tenants do. Two years ago, if you look at the city of Jasper, there wasn't a building available to rent. Our count, our economy is in a downturn, and now they're building to get Jasper. The same people that are renting our buildings are people that moved from other cities, municipalities, counties, states, to get away from some of the higher tax rate. I promise, I'm already here, most of our leases were signed in 2020, 21, 22, when times were great. These people are already talking about, two years ago when we had assessments, one year ago we had assessments, and now last year we had assessments, and you're talking about a Mexican restaurant that her taxes on her probation went up $700 a month between the city and county, uh, assessment. So, uh, these businesses will leave, you will be in debt. Yes, we, and, and we can, to, to give the council an idea of how competitive some of this is getting, because I noticed the, uh, plans were just submitted to planning development where another space in one of my shopping centers could be, be able to buy a large retail, uh, tearing. That contract went down to 10 cents a foot. Over two weeks, we almost lost that 10, over 10 cents a foot. That's how competitive this is getting. Now, we have plugged in our fees that we thought received taxes, and it will be 31 cents more a year, or 31% more a year to them their first year in here. It's not a good look. I'm just saying, think about more than just the residences and, and residential budget. I respect those people, I know they're struggling, but it's going to trickle down to your small businesses on Main Street that are renting, your, your, your businesses on the outskirts of town and everywhere in between, and you're gonna wind up with empty buildings or low rents, and then people are gonna go through assessments based upon incomes instead of building value. That's it for the night.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any other virtual attendees that have not spoken that would like to speak? All right, may we know others that have not spoken, um, in person or on virtual? Mr. Douglas, you are good to proceed for any of your public hearings, sir.
Yes, sir. We'll, uh, adjourn the public hearing, Mr. Mayor, and I, um, out of respect for the, uh, the remainder, I will defer you to call meeting order.
All right, if you will make sure, ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for being here, if you will make sure that those little handouts are available, um, we have some staff in the back that can hand those out. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, needless for the public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and call our committee to order on the next item on the agenda. I am looking for a roll call. Uh, Councilmember Hannah, can you attest that we have a form in the present?
We have a form in the present.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let the record show, Mr. Hannah, Ms. Navy, Mr. Looney are in attendance in person. Um, Dr. Proctor is virtual, and our legal representation, David Siphon, is also virtual. Council, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, that's precedent.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Councilor, is there any discussion on this agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second? Thank you, Council. Next item, the city manager's office update. Uh, Mr. Douglas, I have either a parts update, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, so just for the, uh, the council to know, we have been working at staff level with our parts committee, Councilmember Hannah, uh, Councilmember Fowles. Uh, don't want to get into too much elaboration, uh, beyond the fact that, uh, Mr. Fowles, unfortunately with his, uh, job, was unable to make it this evening, uh, so the idea was to at least give an update, uh, to the council with respect to some progress being made on soliciting some calls associated, uh, to the playground at City Park. Uh, we have received, uh, so you have in front of you on your desk, um, an actual proposal for a small kids playground area. You may recall several years ago, we had utilized SPOSS funding specifically to, uh, replace, uh, some of the wooden structures at, uh, City Park, uh, with more compliant, uh, playground equipment for our kids. Uh, we recognize that the segregation of the small kid playground and the big kids playground was something that needed to be addressed. Uh, I believe Councilmember Hannah and Mr. Fowles both agreed that we wanted to, uh, finish the task, so to speak. Uh, so you'll be seeing in the next several months, uh, the fact that, uh, we'll be removing some of the small children's playground, uh, in anticipation of, uh, purchasing some new playground equipment that's catered more to that two-year to five-year-old, uh, and being in closer proximity, uh, to the actual existing playground. If you'll see as an exhibit, and if you're familiar with going into the parking spaces, uh, with the playground to your immediate front, just to the right, there's a large, uh, kind of dirt area outside of the mulch playground area that had always been identified as being an opportunity to extend that, uh, small 18, 24-inch barrier, extend it out, uh, put new mulch, and then install the small kids playground. So, uh, if you don't mind, take a look at that. I know Councilmember Hannah and Mr. Fowles are excited, um, if there's something I've left out, Mr. Hannah, with respect to that. Uh, I know we had, I've only been able today to address some of the, uh, the comments of including some more inclusive items in the playground, uh, some sensory and other items, take a look at that. Uh, we will anticipate on having this on the October 7th agenda, uh, for further discussion and/or consideration. Uh, but this is something that had been identified in the 2024, uh, amended budget of four allocating SPOSS funds to complete it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Hannah, from the parts committee, do you have any input or suggestions, sir?
No, I'm just excited, um, to get this done, you know, as a parent of two small kids, it's difficult to have two different playgrounds, so excited to be, uh, combining forces there, leveraging those SPOSS, uh, SPOSS dollars to, uh, fund this as well.
Awesome. No further comments on the parts update, Council? Awesome.
Moving on.
Thank you for the hard work over your committee, though.
Oh, thank you.
Just take it all.
Next item on your agenda, Council, is executive session. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, for the executive session, that is a private matter, we will vote, and we are going into executive session under what title?
Legal and personnel.
All right, executive session for legal and personnel, I need a vote to enter executive session.
Make a motion we enter into executive session?
Motion second.
In a second, any discussion, Council? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second? Thank you, Council.